Call me Nordor. Start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning.
Morning.
We have everybody for the minutes.
Yes, Scott.
We have a Scott on there and we need a last name to go with the minutes. Scott, if you could unmute yourself and give your last name for the minutes. Hopefully we can catch on to it later. Let's go ahead and continue. Next I have is approval of today's agenda.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? All in favor say aye.
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 Most carries. Now we have his approval of claims nine two of 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 2nd, 2020 claims for payment.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? All in favor say aye.
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 Most carries. Now I have utility permits. I have none. Secondary roads department.
No good news on the Gifford Bridge. It's gonna take a few more weeks because we can't get the people there to paint the underside of the bridge. And you can't do the guardrails until that's done, so.
Oh gosh.
So instead of next week, it's, you know, gonna be a few more weeks. It is what it is. Life of bridge construction.
Okay.
Otherwise, everything else is going.
But the other road is open now.
Yes.
The Witten Road.
We need people to keep slowing down for that.
Yes, because they're already ruining it.
Really?
So they are in danger of being forced to close it again. Yes. I heard people respected the 35 mile an hour speed limit.
Any other comments? Any questions? Okay, next. Is section 130 Crossing Safety Improvements Agreement.
So this came about when it first started. The Union Pacific got a request to put arms on the railroad by Sherman. And that Sherman blacked out. So this is just kind of it. I read through it a few times to make sure that, yeah, we don't, we shouldn't owe any money for it. It's just they need our approval to put them up on the road. We're just in charge of some regular maintenance things that. Waiting to check. And so, yeah, they just kind of need your permission to move forward to putting arms on it.
Are you gonna ask for a motion?
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the section 130 Safety Crossing Safety Improvements Agreement as presented by Engineer Raw.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? Roll call.
BJ.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Most carries. Thank you. Next I have is discussion on the objection to the candidate nomination. The objection has been overruled. Darrell, were you gonna speak on this?
This is mainly just a report for the public. There's nothing the board needs to take. He's at 20 through 26 in the packet if you're. Heard a letter on the 31st of August to the election commissioner indicating the panel's decision to overrule the objection. I did include some discussion in that letter about, I guess, what I feel maybe kind of a loose end. Mr. President questioned the jurisdiction of the panel because of the notice that was required to be given. And after the hearing, I confirmed with Commissioner Jessica Lara that notice was properly given. Look, the fanfare was supposed to be before. You can hear the siren in the background. So I just wanted to clear that up so there weren't any clouds over the panel's decision over the process. The rules were complied with to provide notice and that's explained in that letter. It was sent by certified mail. That's all that is required. And then after the hearing, we had learned that Mr. Seward had provided a letter and that wasn't received in time for the hearing. It was placed in the drop box and that drop box is sort of monitored, managed by the treasurer, county treasurer. And so when that was picked up under normal procedures, it went into there. They received it and then they processed it, realized it was something that should go to me and the auditor's office. It was then delivered to our respective offices, but that was after the hearing. But I wanted the public to know what was contained in the letter. And my review of it and the document that was provided by Mr. Seward didn't really introduce any new information, no new arguments. It was, you know, essentially the same arguments that were in his letter of objection. So I guess I'm here just to say that I think that the panel's decision was valid. So I want to just kind of tie off a couple of loose ends for the public.
Thank you.
Supervise, do you have any questions about it or not?
I don't think I do.
I do not.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next I have is acceptance of Brownfield's response to request for qualifications. Angela.
So we sent out the RFQ beginning of August to three companies. The Brownfields RFQ. Writing and management of that grant. We got two submissions. The one. They wrote it on like a sheet of paper and sent it back to me, so I don't think that would be too interesting. So this one, can you pull up the? So this one is from Santec. So awesome company. We've already worked with them on a couple of different instances. The actual grant writing team is responsible for like over $20 million in Brownfield grants that they've written successfully, so they're very good at what they do. So here's just a schedule of what would happen should you guys accept the Brownfields grant. Do you guys remember what the Brownfield thing is?
Refresh us so everybody's refreshed.
So basically Brownfields is a number of different things, but this grant can cover Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental assessments, quality assurance, project plans, site-specific sampling, health and safety plans, redevelopment planning, site remediation work plans, and then like community outreach. So basically what this would do in in the broader scope, it would help create development plans for the whole county. And then it would target site-specific areas. So if there was a site or in Union that we thought was the best for development, we would pile money in there to get that site ready for development. So basically it'll cover anything up until breaking ground. You can piece it out between a bunch of little projects. You can piece it out between two places in the county. You can place it out against the whole county, whatever. Basically what this is, is a development tool to get ready for ground breaking. So it's $60,000 to cover all of that. And Santec writes the grant, they help, they'll be, probably this will work with me and my graduate council, but they'll work to kind of help us narrow down what our focus should be. And then they'll say, okay, you need a Phase 1, Phase 2, you need this, that, and the other thing. And then they'll contract people to do the work. They'll pay the people. They'll handle all of that. And all of their fees are wrapped into that, so nothing comes out of the county's pocket.
Good.
But this is work plan. We do have to tell them hopefully today if we are gonna go with them. And then you start writing the grant and then hopefully it'll be awarded quarter two, three. I think that's coming here and then we can start there.
You've got to start somewhere.
Yeah, it's worth it in the end. And I mean, it's easy to have a company that comes in and knows what they're doing.
Right.
Kind of identify. And they've worked in Hardin County on some of those projects already, so.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
Were there any questions? Just stuff in here. This is a company that comes in and writes grants at no cost to the county and helps us with economic growth of different things. It's a good tool for your committee. This would work for, I will false to if they were in there. Okay.
I would make a motion to accept the Brownsfields' response to the request for qualifications.
I will second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? Roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Most carries. Thank you. Let them know. And next is I have is a resolution to lift the moratorium on Seawex. We put one in action, the moratorium back in December, if I recall. And now that the new ordinance has been drawn up and published and approved, that should probably lift this.
Make a motion to approve the resolution to lift the moratorium on the Seawex construction permits.
Lance, I will second Renee's motion.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you no discussion? Roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Aye. Most carries. Next we have is headwaters of the South Skunk Watershed Management Authority 2080. We were sent an email on this asking if we wanted to join a 2080 as part of ours. The Harden County. I don't know that we even have a total of three acres. It just touches into the Harden County line, so. If you guys want to join the 2080 on this, we really don't have a whole lot of, say, it's mostly in the, I don't know if they have a map of that or not. Jewel area is the center of a story city rolling, just touches the county by Radcliffe in the southwestern corner. Williams, Flersburg, Camer, Stanhope, Stratford, Gilbert, Ames. So hopefully you guys have had an opportunity to look this over as well. And I would entertain any motion if you would like to go forward with it.
Lance, I'd make a motion to enter the headwaters of the South Skunk River Watershed Management Authority 2080 agreement.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If we go forward, we'd have to pick a representative on this, so. Any other discussion? Are you no more? Just keep in mind that the second motion would be putting a representative on this. So roll call.
BJ.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Most carries. Next is a representative for this. To appoint a representative.
Does, I didn't see anything in the 2080 agreement that stated if it needed to be one of the supervisors or if it could be a member of the public. And I just thought I would see what your thoughts were.
We can go through it. We can take our time, review it, and go through that. She has a 2080 agreement that we could look at today or we could review it and bring it back to us next week.
Yeah, can we just table that decision and put it on next week's agenda?
I can with a motion.
All right. I will make the motion to table the decision on the representative for that board.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to table for the represent, put a representative on there to bring back to us next week, I hope.
Yeah, I think we should be able to do that.
Yep.
Any discussion? Are you no more? All in favor say aye.
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 Next we have discussed with possible action on plat books. I want to hear from Lori. You deal with the plat books. Want to come up to the front?
Right now we're at the point where we do produce our own plat books and we sell them for 20, oh my gosh. And I might have lost $21, I believe. 21, 22. Anyway, we are at the point where it has to be updated. I've talked to Jess Sheridan about it. And we are going to get Micah in here to help us update it, you know, right at this moment so we can get some more plat books printed, so we have the updated information. And then from that point on, she will be showing Jess how to do the update herself.
Good.
So I'd rather keep it in-house. With our own information updating and that's what we prefer.
Thank you.
I would agree.
So it was presented to us last week. If we wanted to purchase plat books and turn around and sell those alongside with ours, do I have a motion to go ahead and purchase the other plat books or otherwise we'll just continue the way we are?
I prefer to continue the way we are.
I'd prefer to keep it in-house and go with what Lori prefers and then utilize the skills and talents of Jess Sheridan to get that done.
Well, then I will just go ahead and move to the next one, which is Wellness Committee Appreciation Event Proposal. Hey, I do appreciate the Wellness Committee and their thoughts they put into everything. I do not feel that we should serve food if the Wellness Committee is truly for all entities of our insurance company. And only one person can eat another that they can't. We want people to come to the Wellness Committee, so I, my personal fear not to even have food.
Yeah, I can live with that. That's fine with me.
I would, but I do like the Wellness Committee getting your shots, the information, and what they're doing. And it also creates part of their last step, I believe, to that step program that they have.
The, right, the wellness program for.
So. So I do like, I do like that, having this and getting the shots to people that want them.
And this won't be the only day for the shots. I think Rocky or somebody is working with Green Belt Home Care to also set up a couple of other days that they would, if they can't make it to this event, they would be able to possibly go to Green Belt Home Care or wherever they decide to set up to give other people and even from the other entities that are on our insurance plan a chance to get their vaccinations on maybe another day or two.
I guess, I don't know if Lynn was on or not, if you want to speak. By those.
He was. He still was.
But let's have Lynn. He presented it to us.
I thought would be if we were not trying to do it another time for employees.
I think the reason we decided to include the meal was we were trying to, kind of trying to combine what you guys did last year with you know, the employee appreciation thing where we went out to Sac Fox and we had a lunch and stuff. So we just thought we were trying to kind of put two of those things together, but I, you know, if you don't want to do the lunch, that's fine. We'll probably proceed with the Wellness Fair and the immunization thing on the same day and so it's up to you guys, whatever you prefer.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that either. I mean, I'm on that committee also. So I would make a motion that we continue with the Wellness Event for the shots and also the well, would be the Health and Wellness Fair and the immunizations.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I would just add, we might want to adjust, and I don't know, I don't know, you guys need to be involved in that, but adjust the hours because if we're gonna not have lunch, you know, they may want to do it like a morning or something, like from 10 to 12 or 9 to 12 or something like that, to be set up a little bit longer time and it wouldn't have to be over the lunch hour. But I guess that can, I mean, as long as that doesn't involve any money or anything, so I guess if you're okay with the Wellness Committee determining that as far as the time.
Lynn, a question was presented. Could it be at the EOC building instead of the fairgrounds?
Yeah, I think if we're not doing a lunch, we don't need that big of a spot. So, yeah, I think that would be probably better.
I agree. Lori made the comment, but the parking is not really sufficient over on that street. I would, I would recommend just leaving, keeping it at the fairgrounds. I've already talked with Connie and we can use one or both of the buildings, so I think that would also give a little more area for social distancing also. So I would, I would be in favor of keeping it at the fairgrounds in youth building or.
And I'm okay with Wellness Committee setting up the time.
The time and place then. Okay, good.
Yeah, for all those reasons.
And then we can get notice out to all the entities.
So I think we would probably try to, try to get most everybody that's gonna need immunizations to do it that one day. And then I think the nurses would still maybe have to catch a few people that are either like, you know, gone that day or can't do it, but but that might be able to, and then that will get more people to come to the Wellness Fair also. And then I, I figure even if people who aren't part of our wellness, I mean, they can still get information there that day. They just won't get any credit or any incentive points or anything for it, but they still might pick up some stuff that they could use.
Well, I would think that we could keep the, I mean, are you saying not have the booths with the information for the additional?
I think we should have them. I'm just saying that people that show up for their shots, but they aren't part of our wellness this year, starting getting incentives. You know, they could still visit the booths and pick up information or talk to people. And they might still get some, you know, ideas on, for their, themselves as far as health and wellness, but they just wouldn't be able to turn it in, you know, for points, for incentives.
Would, would they, are you saying they'd still be able to get the shots even though they're not part of our insurance pool?
No.
No. I think who gets the shots would be the same as we've always done in the past, just they have to be on our health plan and.
Correct.
Which everybody that's on the Wellness Program would qualify because, you know, they had to be on our Wellness Program or they had to be on our plan in order to be on the Wellness anyway, so.
Correct. Any other discussion? Are you no more? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next I have is the Sheriff's Monthly Report.
I'd make a motion to approve the Sheriff's Monthly Report as presented by Sheriff McDaniel.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are you none? All in favor say aye.
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 Most carries. Next is the change of status on the conservation.
Make a motion to approve the change of status for the resignation of Martin Steiner. He was a park tech at $14 an hour and he has resigned his position. And they're releasing him, taking him for his 10 years of service August 31st.
I'll second Renee's motion.
It's been moved and seconded. I believe, repeat the motion again, Renee.
I'll narrow the motion down a little bit. It was just to approve the change of status for Martin Steiner who for his resignation, he was permanent part-time park tech at Conservation effective August 31st, 2020.
Is there any other discussion? Are you no more? All in favor say aye.
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 Here is. Next we have Board of Health Facial Covering Recommendation. I thought Jeff was gonna be here. Is he on the, there he is.
Yeah, I'm here. Hold on just a second here. Yeah, last Thursday, the Board of Health passed a set of recommendations asking that individuals in Harden County wear face coverings when they're in public. It, the recommendations also includes a listing of what is considered to be public settings when, when people cannot keep six feet apart in, in those settings. There were also some exemptions that were included, for example, when you're traveling in your private vehicle, things like that, exercising. And also there are some exemptions for children under two years of age or those that shouldn't be wearing a mask for medical reasons. And then also, we also included, let's see, one other section, just the, what constitutes an adequate face covering. So these were recommendations really in an effort to to, to set a norm in Harden County as the, both the numbers and the rate of COVID-19 cases increases in Harden County and across the state. So it's in the interest of health and safety for those in Harden County.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Questions? Well, no comments or questions. Let's move to the COVID-19 update. Thomas.
231 that have, that are tested positive, but that's not our number of current cases in the county. I actually could not find the number of current cases in the county. But I think it's only in the teens or twenties of active cases. We also.
Rocky said 58.
I'm sorry?
Rocky just said there's 58 active cases currently.
Great. Thank you, Rocky. So we continue to work on looking at the recommendations through the county as far as healthcare with the EOC team meets every Monday yet. We have looked the long-term care, all the facilities in the county, got PCR, some type of a COVID testing machine for their facilities and they're working through the process now of trying to figure out how they're going to test people twice a week in addition to all the other stuff they do within the long-term care facilities. And the testing twice a week still doesn't get them to an opening status, so they're testing a known population twice a week, so the healthcare side of the process is still working that. In addition to that, we talked last week, I had a meeting with Dave, Renee. The COVID, the grant from the CARES Act money, and that was 312,000, I believe. It appears that we're gonna be sort of using the initial 25% that they recommended right off the top, 25% of public safety, which is the sheriff's office, the jail. All the things to make public safety work, the communications, and taking 25, 25% of that salary and putting that into the CARES money, we're probably going to take up all of that CARES money in that reimbursement to us as a county. So that'll come back. Anything else I think on COVID is status quo. With your permission, I would, because I didn't. With your permission, I would, because I didn't see it on here, but I update you on duration.
Yes.
So, duration happened on August 10. We are still working with FEMA, and they have our request to be added into the public assistance side of the FEMA declaration. Yesterday, Governor Reynolds announced that we did not have enough damage to qualify for the individual assistance. So we won't, we won't qualify for individual assistance on the FEMA side. But I'm working with with Power Company, with Conservation, and with Taylor and Secondary Roads in getting more evidence to our claims. When I went, when we got the letter yesterday, it was that there was not enough supporting documentation for it. But Jim Grandquist, the project specialist out of Des Moines with Homeland Security, said that he didn't see that it'd be a problem, it's just trying to get the documentation to follow what we have documented in what we're, what we're asking for. But we had numbers, we just have to get documentation to show those kind of numbers. So, we're moving forward on that project, and everybody really is getting cleaned up pretty well, Union is getting cleaned up, they hired a contractor in to clean up Union. Witten is cleaned up, and New Providence is cleaned up, we're just trying to track back on New Providence and Witten as far as pictures for damages and things like that. The thing about the fire departments in this county is that they all work hard, they all go right at it, and get things cleaned up. The problem is, is that we have to document that damage before we clean it up. We need to worry about life and safety, but then before we start moving trees and all that kind of stuff out of the roadway, we have to have documentation for that, so in some instances, I'm looking at public to give me pictures, and I've contacted several people to get the pictures, so that we can send pictures of New Providence, Union, and Witten prior to cleanup, to substantiate or something.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
Well, from there, let's give people the ability to unmute themselves and open it up for public comments. You should add that ability.
Lance, this is Donna.
Donna, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to help, thank the County Board of Health for their recommendations. It is a big step forward. I would hope that our board would take another step further along with that, considering that Iowa is now number one for case increases in the country. If nothing else, at least a letter to the governor would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yeah, yes, I, I didn't hear Thomas's number, he kinda cut out, how, how many cases do we have in Hardin County right now?
Active is 58.
58?
58 active?
Yes.
Okay, and then the co, covering recommendations, so is that now that we are supposed to wear masks all in Hardin County, wherever we go? Like into stores? What do I want to say? Wherever we're outside of our homes, we are to wear masks now in Hardin County?
It is a recommendation, not a mandate, from the Board of Health.
Right, and it's anytime that you're you cannot socially distance, you know, six feet from, from other people. And like Lance said, it's a recommendation, it's, it's not a requirement.
Okay, can you guys help out on making that a requirement? Just, I know my husband keeps telling me every now and then, you know, the numbers are spiking in Hardin County here and there, and it it kinda makes me really nervous, like even going to the grocery store or something, I'm, you know, we both have underlying health problems, and it, it makes me scared when I go to the grocery store and I see all the people that are not wearing masks. You know, like one day I was in there and it was only me and the workers working, and I, you know, I fear for their, you know, for their health too, and then also, you know, kind of for mine too, it's, it's kinda scary.
Well, at this point, personally, I can go along with recommend, the recommendation, but I I would not be in favor of mandating it for everyone at this point. That's just my...
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
So this is us, can you hear me?
Julie?
Yes.
I'm muted, I'm, okay, good, so this is just a suggestion, and nothing has changed about, about recommending masks and stuff. It's, it's just a suggestion, there's no change. Oh, my question was, Green Belt Home Care's moving to a different building then? Are they moving from the hospital where their offices, where now they're moving to a different building? Is that, is, could I have some information on that, I'm curious about that, thanks.
Rocky, do you know any information on that?
Lance, I can speak on that, this is Megan Harrell. And I'm with Green Belt, so, yes, Julie, we are moving on October 21st. We have selected another location in Eldora still, and I kinda forgot where I was going with that, but we are, you know, we're just, we're looking for just a little bit of a different space to provide us. It, it just, it works better for our, our company, this new space, but we will still be in Eldora, and you know, phone number, everything like that will remain the same, we've actually discussed that we will be letting the public know here, once we get, you know, just a smidge closer, but we're working on some signs, and probably we'll do some type of press release to make it, you know, a little bit more official, and make sure everybody's aware that this is the plan come October 21st.
Okay, thanks, I was just wondering about, you know, if it, you know, any remodeling that needed to be done, any cost, you know, just curious about what the cost was for that, thanks.
Oh, sure, yeah, no, that's, we're not having to take on any of that cost for any kind of remodeling, the business that owns the building we're going into is taking care of that themselves.
Are there any other public comments? Here are no other public comments, I will go to other business. BJ?
I have nothing, thank you.
Well, from there, I could ask for adjournment or recess.
I will, I'll make a motion to recess. We do have a work session at 1:00 PM, I don't know if there will be any decisions to be made.
Okay, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to recess to our 1:00 PM work session. A discussion on that is with IG, CHP, and Wellmark regarding their claims processing. If anybody wants to tune in then, you can see what that's about. Any other discussion?
And then we do have the 9:30 and a lot of the clock during each meeting, so...
Correct.
Those would be separate.
Any more discussion? Are there no more, all in favor say aye.
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 We are recessed. Thank you. Well, we got 1 o'clock, we got everybody here that I think is gonna be here to attend. And let's just go over this, Denise, I sent you a email here a few days, a week ago, or something like that, you responded to me. What have we found out on this, and how is everything going at this point?
Great, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate everybody allowing us to visit with you this afternoon with regards to the transition from your self-funded Wellmark plan into the IGHCP plan. As mentioned, and you all know, we ran into some technical difficulties, and then the transition relative to the transfer of information between EBS and, and Wellmark didn't go as smoothly as it typically does. As far as where we're at today, I guess let's start there, and we'll kinda work backwards, but we are fully processing claims, EBS has received all of the data from Wellmark, and claims are being processed, EOBs are being created and sent, and providers are being paid. So, we are about 30 days behind where we expected to be relative to that transition, but everything is running smooth as of today. So I, I did ask Kareem Amiri from Wellmark to join us on this call today, and he's joined us, so I'll let him kind of speak up a little bit as well, as far as that, you know, how that transition went versus our expectation.
Thanks Denise, and just so everybody knows, I'm a team leader at Wellmark in our large group account management area, and Sharon Bowens on on the line with me as well, and she's the account manager for IGHCP, and works a lot with Denise and Cindy and the rest of the EBS team. And first off, just want to apologize that this did take longer than it normally does. Traditionally, this is pretty smooth. I will say, one of the things that, technical issues that we had at Wellmark in transmitting the data over, as, as a group moves on to IGHCP, we generally set up a claims file that goes through. The team did that timely and all that, but unfortunately, we had a lot of our systems, or platforms, they call it SharePoint, we use a Microsoft system, were being updated and transferred to the cloud. And as we, way we communicate within internally, is through some of those SharePoint sites and submitting those requests. Unfortunately, there is a period of time where some of those requests, even though it looked like we submitted it correctly, and it was, was not being transmitted to the area that needed it. So those files didn't get started timely, and we didn't realize what the issue was until probably about the early part of August, I want to say that first or second week of August. And, you know, started working on that with EBS and getting that updated, and then additional claims files to try and catch up, and make sure that your members had the proper accumulations, so that EBS could process those, those claims. And traditionally, there's, there's always some lag anyway, but this obviously took longer than it normally would. And even, you know, sometimes we have to go back and pull claims, because there could be claims that come in later, that we need to adjust, that would have been to your prior plan, and we need to adjust accumulation still, so that could still be happening with some people. But for the majority of everybody, we should be up to date and, and good going forward.
Yeah, so that, to Kareem's point relative to there's always some lag, so a, as you can imagine, you had individuals that were still going to, you know, receiving medical care and so forth the end of June, prior to coming into IGHCP. So the reason there's a little bit of lag, we, we don't even request the data be transferred to us until July 30th, because we want to give your employees 30 days for those June claims to get through the system and process, so they get all of the credit that they should have relative to deductible and out-of-pocket. So we started requesting that, the transfer of that data on July 30th, so all, you know, we were, we were doing everything timely, we just didn't understand where the disconnect was happening, which it sounds like now was mainly in the cloud communication, so in order to help your employees understand why there was such a lag, because let's, let's face it, I mean, here's what happens when, when we had the, the disruption like we did, your employees are going to the, the doctor, to the hospital, picking up pharmacy scripts, they're doing all of the necessary things to access their medical care early in July, and we're already not even gonna request that information until the end of July, right? So they've got 30 days, and that's, and that's what we anticipated, you add another 30 to that, and now they have providers that are saying, somebody owes us money. You know, Wellmark's processed the claim, but we haven't, you know, they haven't seen that second processing occur, so they're saying, somebody owes us money, and they don't know who else to go to besides your employee. So they go to your employee, and then it starts to scare the employee, because they say, I kind of remember what Denise said during the employee meetings, but gosh, that's been a few months ago. I don't remember exactly what she said, but I thought there was gonna be a second processing. But enough times passed, that they don't remember that exactly, so now they're nervous and worried, and possibly getting collection notices. These were 60 days. So, we hear you, and we understood that it was you know, vital that we recommunicate with your employees, we pull them back in, we make sure they understand that that second processing is gonna happen. So we hurried our team, and we got letters out with communication to all Hardin County employees, anybody that participates in the medical plan received a letter and an explanation of what occurred to their home. Because we had the opportunity to communicate with them, we, we added a paragraph in there, I'm sure you all know, because you would have received the letter too. Just reiterating that second processing, you know, don't forget, we are processing claims now. That second piece is gonna come through, and we're gonna process down to your lower level deductible and out-of-pocket maximum, we're gonna pay your provider. So, you know, be on the lookout for that, so hopefully, the, the waters have calmed, I can tell you that from a call volume, it's gone down tremendously, so we're hopeful that the employees have since received that communication. I understand that they're not happy that it happens, but hopefully, they, they understand, and they, they saw that there, there wasn't, there was a technical difficulty that was kinda out of our control, and that certainly is not the new normal. That's not how we operate, we are, we are terribly sorry that we got off on the wrong foot with, with that, I wish we could have a redo with the knowledge that we have now relative to where that breakdown occurred. But, but we do think it's been resolved.
So issues continue to happen, who's the contact point, and how are they gonna get resolved, and how fast, is there something that can be sent to the provider that's or to the person that's trying to collect agency from you guys?
So the contact, the first point of contact is always gonna be myself and my team, that's where we want you to go first, because we have relationships with all of the other people that are involved. And I think we can get it done the fastest, so, yes, reach out to us, if you have an employee that has a collection notice or something like that, and, or that the providers kind of being, you know, pushy relative to getting this process through, get in touch with us, we'll verify benefits, we'll send the provider everything that they need, so that they understand that that second layer of processing is gonna occur, and, and that they will be paid. But we, we verify benefits all the time, so always come to us.
And is that, I mean, you say us, but I've always been told to call Kim, is that who we call, or?
Yes, Kim works on my team.
And how does, can you explain, so who does she actually work for, who she's an employee of?
She's an employee of Two Rivers Insurance, which is my employer and Cindy's employer, and we're the consulting team for IGHCP.
Okay, I just, I mean, my concern is, I'm one of those people who, you know, has a bill sitting there, and it's very easy to say if they've gotten you know, that somebody's been turned over to, to small claims, I mean, it should never, ever get, I mean, I pride myself on paying my bills right away, and there's, you know, they keep saying, they're saying I owe them $1,100, and they're a company that, I mean, I first of all didn't realize, because I kept hearing when we were going through this changeover, that it, the only claims that would be effective would be like hospital bills. Well, mine is, you know, equipment, but I guess because it goes to deductible, it's, it's included, and then... And then the other thing with this company, I mean, this is a company from out east. And if it was my local doctor or my hospital, I'd call them and say, hey, they're having problems. We're working on this. But, you know, a big company and I need to reorder supplies fairly soon. And if I call them to reorder and there's an amount owed there, they just, they just refuse to send it. They will not send it. So. And I think I've got a week or so to, you know, to play. But, I mean, that's why I keep calling Kim and saying, when, you know, and she's really good to work with. But she just keeps saying, well, I think maybe next week it'll get resolved and that's really not good enough.
Good enough. I agree. I agree. That's not good enough. So I will circle back with her and find, your claim should have been processed and paid as of right now. It should be over, but I haven't reached out on you specifically. So let me do that so that I'm not speculating and giving you a rough idea. And then I will make sure that you get an answer that yes, your claim was processed. This is when it was processed. Almost all providers receive electronic payment for us. We pay the providers the same day we process claims. So I believe that your claim has been processed and paid, but I will confirm and get back to you.
Okay, that would be great if you could just, yeah, if I just know that it's been done and I could even, you know, when I talk to them, say it was processed, you will be getting a check.
Yeah.
Does this also pertain to dental bills?
No, the dental went through without any, without any glitches.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
I would, I have another question just, and this isn't related to this issue, but it's on the copay, copays for office visits. Under our old plan prior to July 1st, well, like, I broke, I broke a bone in my leg. So I had to go to the doctor like several, like every two weeks to be x-rayed and then I would see the doctor. So like, it looked to me like they were charging a copay, an office copay, even though I was going for one visit and getting the x-ray done right there. It's at McFarland, so they do the x-ray right in their office. And then you go to another room and you see the doctor. But it looked to me like I was getting charged two different copays for that visit. And I brought it up to McFarland and they were like, oh no, you shouldn't be. But then it looked to me on the billing and stuff that it was. So is that, should there be two copays or not?
There should not be two copays. There's one copay per day.
Okay.
So if you feel that you were charged more than one copay, that would be somewhere, something that you would want to reach out to Kim about. And then she'll work directly with Wellmark to get that resolved because partial self-funding doesn't apply to that type of a claim.
Okay.
How would that work on your annual physical?
I'm sorry?
Well, you have an annual physical. The annual physical is free through Wellmark or through our plan, correct?
Correct.
So there should not be a copay, correct?
Correct. Unless you're getting something done that falls outside of the annual physical guidelines.
So if there were, and also does this pertain to pharmacy? You know, your, your prescription drugs? I mean, has there been a problem with those being paid?
There has not been a problem with prescription drugs that I'm aware of. As previously mentioned, it's going to be where the, the issue was occurring was where the deductible and out of pocket come into play. So that's going to be typically hospital type of services. But as again, previously mentioned, durable medical equipment would fall into that as well.
You got the letter mailed to you?
Yeah, I haven't. It's been a while since I read it.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it.
Were there any other questions or comments?
I think the letter just came out within the last, I got it like a day or two ago, so it just came out.
That would make sense.
Lance, Lori Cadner had a question for you or for somebody.
Lori. Type faster.
Is she still on?
I have a, it says, I have prescriptions and 90-day supplies. But I have to pay three copays. Is that correct?
She didn't have to.
I think I brought that up to you before Denise.
We have had a plan where it was 90 days for one copay.
And then she says, I have talked to others who had, you know, also 90-day supply and did not have three copays.
We talked about it at our wellness committee meeting, Renee, remember? And I think today there were people there that some did and some didn't, so.
Kareem, can you comment on that?
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look at the benefits to see what it says. I don't know if Sharon, you have that in front of you or? I mean, it depends on the, the plan and I'd have to go back and look at the plan design.
If I recall, and I asked you a couple of months ago over that, you told me that if you go to the pharmacy and do it, you have to pay for all three copays. If you do it through the mail, it's only two copays.
I mean, I, I'm positive through the mail, it's two copays for three months. But I know there are some exceptions to that 90-day at the pharmacy. So I, I want to, I just don't have, I don't have that, that summary plan description in front of me to be able to answer. Cindy, are you able to access that?
Um, yeah, I'm looking it up.
Okay.
Excuse me. So mine must be so cheap that I don't have to pay a.
You don't even make the copay.
Well, I do, I do have to pay something. I can't remember what I was paying. I'll have to ask the, the old pharmacy. I don't know. I just pay it.
If it doesn't make the $20, if your bill's on $20.
No, sometimes it's like ends up being 30 sometimes, so. Maybe there's a copay on some and then the cheaper ones, there is a copay.
There's different layers of.
Yeah, Renee, that definitely could be the case. So if the cost of the prescription drug is less than the copay, you'll, you'll pay that lesser cost. So let's say you pick up two prescription drugs. One has a $20 copay and the other drug actually only costs $10. They're going to charge you the $30 instead of two copays equalling 40.
Okay.
And then also with some drugs, there's a tier of cost.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's.
We had something else on there.
Three copays for 90-day supply, retail maintenance, two copays for 90-days, 90-days by mail order maintenance.
Good job Cindy, you got there before I did. I was almost there.
At the pharmacy, you pay three copays.
What about single shots at the pharmacy? Those covered? Those should be covered under preventative.
I was told there was no charge.
Oh Lori.
The employee for that.
Lori had something earlier than that too. 20 and $25. I can just see the bottom.
Okay.
I also just received an EOB on dental visit and nothing was covered. I only have ever paid 20 to $25. That's a little, that one is probably too vague for me to answer. If you want to send us the EOB, then we'll be able to look into it.
I know one, I had that happen, but it was because they were still sending it to the wrong, to the old company.
Yeah, it's probably something as simple as that, but we'll, we'll do the legwork on it and, and then let you know. So if you want to send that over to Kim, she will get right on that.
So what I've gathered is everything's ready to go. We should be up and running 100%, right?
Yes.
And if we're not, you because you're unaware of it.
Yes, we, we have, all of us have triple-checked with, with Wellmark, with EBS. EBS keeps checking with Wellmark, so we are all communicating very regularly to make sure that there's no more wrinkles.
I don't have anything more regarding this, but when everybody's done asking their questions on this, I have a question regarding the drug reclassed. So if anybody has any other questions on copay or any issues they have, please ask those first.
I think they got their questions.
Okay. Um, my doctors recommended I have reclassed or I guess it's an infusion type drug. And I called to see how that's covered and was told if they bill it as an office visit, I pay my $25 copay. But if they bill it anything otherwise, which it's, it's going to cost me $5,000. That's my share. So I guess I just go from, well, part of it, I have osteoporosis hips, but spine or something is osteopenia. So I guess I just end up with osteoporosis there too because I, I'm not paying $5,000 out of my.
Of course. So Cindy, do you have their benefits pulled up? What's, what's the out of pocket maximum?
The out of pocket maximum for singles $1,500.
Okay, so Renee, did you call Wellmark with that question or the IG? Yes. Okay, so keep in mind that, and I'm going to address your, your statement to two parts. When you call Wellmark, Wellmark only sees the level of benefits that they're providing you. So they don't see that partial self-funding, which, which buys that plan down to only a $1,500 out of pocket for you, not a 5,000. So that $5,000 number would automatically shift to 1,500. With that said, $1,500 is still a lot of money out of pocket. The $1,500 is what you have to pay out of pocket in any calendar year. So if you've met any portion of that out of pocket, then you would just have to make up the difference till you reach that $1,500. So I think the question is, is how will you receive that transfusion? As Wellmark said, that's correct. If it's just done in the doctor's office, it's going to be rolled up into that doctor's office visit. But if you go to an outpatient center and it's billed as an outpatient hospital expense, then deductible and out of pocket are going to apply, which is where that $1,500 or 5,000 on the full insurance side come into play.
Denise, I know we talked about this before, previous, on our previous plan, when you went on the Wellmark side, it would show the, our deductible, the $1,500 deductible when you looked at the Wellmark side of it. Can that happen again so people aren't so confused?
It cannot happen at the Wellmark level because they are not providing you that $1,500 benefit. That's happening at EBS, but they can certainly sign on to the same type of patient portal at EBS so that they can see, they can see how their claim was applied to their $1,500 out of pocket maximum.
Can you answer that to me the same way before or just make sure everybody can hear it?
Yeah, so in the, in the most recent letter that we sent out, we reminded the employees how they can go out and, and view their claims on Zelle's and so forth so that they can see that, that how that better benefit is applying to their services.
And if those claims been uploaded yet, because I did register, but nothing showed up, would it be on there if I look?
It should be on there now because they processed your claims beginning on Monday. So with today being, yeah, Cindy, do you think they'll be able to see that as of today?
I can, I can have somebody look. I would think so because they had to have, they had to enter all of the Wellmark information where you were at as far as what you met. So that would have been the first piece. And then once they process claims, that would have been the second piece. So I would think everything would be in there now.
It usually takes four to 48 hours. So to be safe, you might want to wait and check tomorrow. But I think that, you know, there's a really good chance that you'll be able to see everything today. I know on the other group that we brought off, we brought on the city of Fort Dodge, the same time as Harden County. And not that it's going to make you feel any better, but they had the same pains that you did. I mean, they, we had the same kind of glitch there that we did here. So I, I did look up for another, for an employee over at Fort Dodge and I was able to see all of their information yesterday.
My God, you're doing Fort Dodge first.
No, they just called me. Actually Harden went better than Fort Dodge if we're all being honest. Fort Dodge had issues.
We know.
Lori's suspect pharmacy. Did she just put that?
Yes, go back to pharmacy.
Must be a delay in the typing.
Is the plant, is the plan the IGHCP has or is that what the?
Board of Supervisors.
It's the plan that IGHCP has. So when, when we came in and started working with Harden County, our intention was to match your current set of self-funded benefits as closely as we could. You know, it's always our hope that if we can't meet, we beat the, the prior carrier or the prior coverage. So we, we created that, that prescription drug. We selected that from the, the prescription drug options that IGHCP has to offer to most closely mirror what you have, what you had prior. I think that actually the, the benefits under the prescription drug were a little enhanced over what you had before because you had separate out of pocket accumulators attached to your other benefit that you don't have today. So your overall out of pocket cost for prescription drugs should be less under the IGHCP plan than what they were under the Wellmark, the prior Wellmark plan.
They do go against your deductible as well, or your out of pocket max, I mean.
Yeah, yes. But the, the difference is, is the health, the health out of pocket maximum and the prescription out of pocket maximum combined to just be one, where your old's plan, you had to meet two separate levels of out of pocket maximums. They didn't combine.
And if I recall right, there's one more tier for higher dollar drugs that we didn't have before.
I think there's actually one less tier. So we have tiers one, two, and three, and then a specialty tier. Your prior plan, I believe, had tiers one, two, three, four, plus specialty.
That's what it was.
Should have had the reclass before then. But like you say, I'll meet my out of pocket maximum.
So Lori, I guess the, what I would, I, I agree that that does kind of suck. She said three copays for 90 days of supply. So my, could we get you on mail order for that prescription drug so that you can get a 90-day supply for two copays? That, if, if we could do that, we'd be happy to assist you in that process.
Personally, I like to stay local. Everybody makes their own decision.
That's what Renee said. Or not Renee, but Lori said the same thing.
I understand. So Lori, if you could, if you could reach out to Kim, do you have Kim's contact information? If you could reach out to Kim, let her work on that a little bit and see what options she can come up with for you.
Is this something that the board of supervisors can do? They can keep it locally.
I don't think we have control over it anymore.
I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
Denise?
Yeah, almost.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know if I was on mute. This is kind of a different topic too, but we're going to have a, like, when we do our immunization thing, the wellness committee is setting that up. And we're going to have a, like a wellness fair that same day. And we are going to meet hopefully tomorrow and we may have to look at the date. But would that be something that you guys could come and set up a table and just be available? So that during that time, if people had questions, kind of like what I've asked or what other people have asked, that they could actually come and meet with somebody at that table from your company that day to get some of those answered directly?
Yes, we, we participate in health fairs all the time, so we're happy to do that. I would want to know the details just so that I can discuss it internally relative to COVID-19 and our social distancing policies. So that would be the only caveat that I would, I would add to that. But, but we absolutely do health fairs on a regular basis for IGHTP.
Okay, so who, who would be the, if our committee meets tomorrow and we confirm for sure the date and everything, who, who would be the contact? You or somebody else on your team or?
That would be me.
Okay.
Are there any other questions, concerns?
I guess the only other thing I might mention, and this is something that we can talk about maybe as we go into renewal, is the three, you know, I, I appreciate that you want to, you know, fill your scripts locally and do business with local pharmacy pharmacies. So we can talk about ways where we can maybe try to figure out a three-months supply for one co-pay, but that would require some, that would require partial self-funding and an arrangement be made with local pharmacies and EBS. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, Kareem, but I don't know how we do that at the fully insured level.
Right, I mean, you'd have to change the, the pharmacy plan and.
That would have to be for all IGHTP.
Yeah, correct.
It would, it's going to be an expensive endeavor, whether Hardin County wants to do it by themselves. I, I wouldn't be able to probably get it by the IGHTP board to add that kind of expense on to all, all groups. But if that's something that you want to look at, we can evaluate that and, you know, look at the cost benefit as we approach renewal.
Can I answer my question?
So just to go back on this, if, and I don't even know that I have any or this pertains to me, but with the issue that was, was going on, if people paid the bill rather than having it going to collections or if you paid what they tell you, told you you owed when you leave their office or whatever, and now things are going through the second channel, will that refund or will that payment go, still go to the provider? And then the provider would have to issue a refund to the, to the patient? Is that how that will happen?
Yes, we're going to pay the provider. So I, I'm not aware of any that went to collections. Remember, your plan started July 1st and we started processing claims at the end of August. So I can appreciate 60 days is, is too long and, and we regret that very much. But hopefully 60 days wasn't so long that people actually got sent to collections, especially, you know, with the explanation from the, the patient and certainly all of the ones where we personally called and verified benefits to the provider. EBS, Employee Benefit Systems, is widely known across the state of Iowa. It's certainly known in your geographical area because we have so many IGHTP cardholders in, in your, your geographical area. So each time that, that we reached out to providers to let them know that you do have that second layer of benefits, they were very cordial and understanding.
I guess to step on, or not step on, but to go along with where, what Renee was saying, let's, let's use me as an example. If, if I've already met the out-of-pocket max and I've been going to the doctor in the last 60 days and I've been paying my co-pay, would that be reimbursed back to me since I would have already met that out-of-pocket max?
Yeah.
And who does that get reimbursed from?
Employee Benefit Systems.
So even office copays go toward deductible or out-of-pocket?
Office copays go towards your out-of-pocket maximum, towards your $1,500 out-of-pocket maximum and your Wellmark out-of-pocket maximum, correct?
That's only as of July 1st, correct?
No, that should have been prior as well.
It, it's the entire calendar year.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter if we're Group Services or you guys.
Really?
Yes.
All right.
It, it didn't restart, it did not restart again July 1st.
Correct.
So is there anything that doesn't go toward out-of-pocket?
No, everything goes, any service that you incur is going to go to that Wellmark out-of-pocket maximum. All services go to the Wellmark out-of-pocket maximum. That was part of ACA.
So did you say, is there a website to go to that we can look at to see what out-of-pocket maximums we've paid?
Yeah, so you can, if you want to see your partial self-fund, you know, that's your benefits. You can do that at, at EBS, EBS's website. And, and everything on EBS's website is going to speak to your $1,500 out-of-pocket maximum.
Do you have that website address or?
It's EBS underscore TPA dot com.
Okay.
Thank you. And if you, and then I, Renee, if you haven't set up like a username and, and those, you know, you'll have to do that, that very first time because obviously there's HIPAA information there. But yeah, that's, that's where you could get that set up.
Okay. Actually, it's EBS dash TPA.
Oh, it is, sorry.
Yeah, it's a dash.
The dash, not underscore.
Yeah.
I wondered that as I was saying it.
Yeah. And Gateway is where you can see your claims. So you're going to see a button to go to Gateway Claims and set up your account.
And you guys sent that, that letter, that recent letter?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, those instructions were with the letter.
Okay.
Well, are there any other questions? Thank you for being, bringing everybody to.
Yes, I appreciate you allowing us the time to kind of go through what, what happened. And, you know, not that I, you know, I'm asking you to be tolerant of excuses because I'm not, but I do appreciate the opportunity to be able to explain what happened and to reassure you that, that we're on it and, and everything is running smoothly now.
Good. Becca, I probably have my letter. I just haven't read it very thoroughly evidently.
Mail.
I would just say that, you know, even though I've been one that's been a little frustrated with this payment thing, but I mean, Kim has always been really good to work with and it's nice to know of a person that I can call if I have issues. And even though she can't always give me a definite, you know, date of when it'll be done, she's been very responsive and calling back and things like that, so I appreciate that.
Thanks, thank you for saying that. And, and that's one of the things that we really pride ourselves on is, you know, Wellmark does an outstanding job. And nobody's going to deny that. But, you know, you don't know who you're going to get when you call a customer service number, whether that's Wellmark or any business, right? So we try to have that dedicated person so that you're not starting over every time you pick up your phone. You know, she's going to know who you are, she's going to have your file in front of her and we'll remedy the situation as, as effectively as, as possible.
Well, I don't have any other questions if anyone else, we can adjourn.